So, good morning and welcome to the pre-agenda interviews for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. We have one appointment to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority Board, three appointments to the Civic Design Committee, and four appointments to the Public Art Committee. If members are okay, I'll take them each separately. So we'll begin with PWSA, and if Mr. James Robert Martin II would please come forward, join us at the table. And you see this sign? And for the public's edification, if you would tell us your name and maybe tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll turn it over to members for questions.
All right, thank you so much. Good morning. It's James Martin. I'm Vice Chancellor for STEM Research and Innovation at University of Pittsburgh. I previously served about four and a half years as the Dean of Engineering when I first came here to the university to continue my academic leadership career and live right downtown in District 6 and look forward to contributing to this city.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. I will now turn it over to Madam Clerk to read the actual bill.
Bill 1117, a resolution appointing James Robert Martin II as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for a term to expire April 30th, 2025.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to members, and why don't we begin with Councilwoman Strasburger, given that she's an actual board member?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome. It's great to have you here interviewing for this interview and conversation. I consider it less of an interview and more of a conversation, us to learn a little bit more about you and for you to learn more about council's priorities with these various boards and commissions. My, you know, I'll just start by saying, as you're well aware, PWSA has gone through quite a transition in the last five years or so, and it continues to go through a transition with everything from its priorities, its growing, its budget, having the funds to be able to invest in sorely disinvested infrastructure over the last 50 years and its own management structure.
Absolutely.
So with that in mind, you know, we have, I think, a very strong board right now, and it's credit to both current and past board members, along with the leadership team, that has allowed, I think, the authority to, even if not every resident of the city is aware of it, I think, from, you know, my vantage point has really started to turn the ship around when it comes to being a reliable source of clean drinking water, stormwater management, and really earning the public's trust more and more every year. And so with the board makeup now, I see those who have various backgrounds that, both with their experience, their level of experience, education, and their hard and soft skills really add to it. Knowing what you know about either current board makeup or even without that, I just would love to hear in your own words what you really think you, in particular, can add to that group of people and what you, from either past board experience or from your vast professional experience, what you tend to bring to positions like this where, yes, there's a fiduciary responsibility, yes, it's a very important role, and you're also in an advisory role to some degree.
Sure. Yeah, well, thank you so much. You know, I guess the short of it is, I should talk about my background. You know, I'm a civil engineer, I'm a practicing civil engineer. I'm a public servant. I have been practicing engineer for over 30 years. I have worked with civil infrastructure projects all over this country and literally all over the world, and especially in critical facilities, and especially critical facilities in extreme events, disaster events. And so both as a researcher, as an educator, and as a professional consultant, I have a wealth of experience to help with things like reliability. We talked about the fact that most of our systems are aging. They were built 100 years ago, you know, at the end of the Industrial Revolution and in the middle of the Industrial Revolution, and they're aging. And we have under-invested in those systems, and we take them for granted. So I think the perspective of understanding from a technical standpoint, the types of redundancies that we need, the types of vulnerabilities that we have, the criticality of eliminating single points of failure, I can bring that to the board. I've also thought about, one of the most important aspects of running a city like this is having the right expertise, the right technical talent. And so, number one, I want to put my shoulder to the wheel because it's in my blood, both my parents. I grew up in rural South Carolina, and both my parents were council members for 40 years. My parents, both my father and my mother, served on the council, my father for 17 years, my mother for 23 years. And that started because my father, when I was eight years old, got tired of climbing into the backyard well. I grew up in a rural area, upstate South Carolina. He'd have to climb over into this wellhouse. It's a 90-foot, it was a 90-foot open well, and shut the water off every time it's cold. And there were continuous problems with that when I was growing up. And so we had a hard time with drinking water, and he decided, I remember the day where he said, "You know, I'm going to do something about this." And so he started a grassroots movement, and 17 years later, he had, you know, he was on council for 17 years. He worked across the state of South Carolina to bring drinking water to those areas. So I think from the standpoint of public service, the diversity associated with the technical expertise, but also with the knowledge of the importance of the criticality of this resource, which can't be taken for granted. But the other part is helping with attracting the best talent here to Pittsburgh. I know one of the challenges is having the engineering expertise where we have professional consultants that, you know, it's a little more lucrative at times. And one of the initiatives that I've already thought about is how I can be a partner with the city, how the university can be a partner with the city, I can be a catalyst to help attract engineers here who are pursuing their PhDs, typically a master's students in their mid-30s, they typically stay here three to four years. The salaries, the idea is that they could come, we could have a special educational partnership with the city where they work as engineers for the city while they're doing their dissertation, which takes three to five years, and they can work on projects associated with challenges that we have. And, you know, that's unique. It's a win-win because we, as a university, get to attract talent here that we didn't have. But for the city, it's a way to have a really highly trained and competent workforce at, you know, in a way that we wouldn't be able to recruit and retain as effectively without working together. So that's something I've thought about that we can add to the board. That's something I'm passionate about.
That's interesting, and I think it really syncs up with the authority's intention and actual practice, you know, practice over the last few years to really diversify and create opportunities for burgeoning businesses, to be able to do business with the PWSA, to be able to do business with the city, whether it's engineering consulting firms or, you know, construction firms that focus on paving, or, you know, any type of, any kind of contractor that might apply for competitive bidding process to do work with the authority and with the city. When there's the need to really ramp up work all across the city and multiple authorities are going, you know, for the same pool of qualified contractors, it's just not going to work, and it's not going to help create opportunities for the smaller firms out there. So it really does seem like your thoughts are syncing up with your ideas for this type of partnership and apprenticeship, or whatever it is, maybe not called an apprenticeship in that field, could also help both the city, PWSA, and other authorities with their efforts.
I think it would help Pittsburgh because it would be a net gravitational attractor, and they would offer quite a bit of expertise and increase the diversity of ideas and thoughts. Many of these would come from other municipalities that have challenges that we can learn from.
Great. Well, I'll reserve, I actually don't have any other questions right now. I want to reserve time for all of the other candidates that we have and other council members to ask questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, I really appreciate being invited, and thank you all for your commitment to moving this city forward and the public service that you provide.
I just want to say thank you for your willingness to serve. And that's why.
That's why we all here.
Well, we're going down the line.
Oh, we're going down.
Yeah.
I thought class was over.
Yeah, so I just have two quick questions. PWSA, I'm curious how you see the agency operating as an independent organization that is not, you know, that is able to make its own decisions about projects regardless of, you know, maybe there are, so that's the situation that I had, was we had this roadway that the neighborhood didn't want and also a flood mitigation project, and the two were tied together, and PWSA was really kind of caught in the middle, right? Because they were tied together, but we needed the flooding, but we didn't want the road, and PWSA was in a very awkward position, I think, throughout that time. So how you would approach, for example, a situation like that? And at the same time, in the same vein, as a board member, and this is specific to another issue that I'm dealing with in my district, which is the case of private sewer lines, which we have throughout the city. And while these sewer lines are not the responsibility of PWSA, they cause an enormous problem, right, for the city? And how, as a board member, you would feel that PWSA would need to work with, for example, the county, the city, to sort of deal with these problems so that we don't reach these impasses where we have two government organizations just standing there saying, "Not my problem." And, you know, citizens in the middle dealing with, you know, horrible sewage backups and no recourse. So if, I know those are very specific questions to my district, but...
To function better on all levels, that would be quite a bit of wisdom. But, no, I think it's important to look at, part of my specialization is in risk, and it's, you know, I speak a language of optimization. That's essentially what I do. I optimize really complicated situations and complex situations, you know, as an engineer, to then categorize and do joint probabilities of what things are critically important, and then use that to communicate to various stakeholders and bring them together. And I think part of what I bring is a background to be able to take a complex issue and communicate it in a way where people can understand the overlaps and people can understand how we're all after the same thing. We occupy the same real estate. At the end, we want to have the city function, we want to have a functional system, we want to have reliability, we want to minimize breaks, we want to increase the responsiveness of the system. And so part of it is leadership, but part of it is communication, and part of that communication involves taking a complex subject and communicating it in a way that everyone can see. And so I think that's part of the challenge, is the way you present and communicate a complex challenge, and I've done that most of my career. As a professional consultant, I'm called in typically when people are at loggerheads with situations like what you said, and there's usually a common thread that it runs through all of those problems if you can break it down and identify the critical weak points. And mostly the times, you find that increased reliability in one system is, there are some benefits to other systems. We all have to excavate. We, you know, leakage in the sewer contaminates the water supply, you got to dig a trench. That provides opportunity for everyone to weigh in and increase reliability of those various systems. And I think working, shifting from systems to silos, I mean, from silos to systems, and having more of that cross-communication is what I would be a really strong advocate for.
Okay, great, great. Thank you. And then one last quick question, because I know it's very important to residents, and it's sort of, at the moment, top of mind, is that there is this new stormwater fee.
Sure.
So twofold, so it's a new fee for residents on what are, quite frankly, extremely high water bills, I think. Our water bills are much higher than my friend's water bills in Los Angeles County, which is surprising, right? But at any rate, so the new stormwater fees, twofold, your thoughts about larger businesses like the UPMC, the sort of large property owners, and then also what are your thoughts on how we should be using those fees, like how best to use that money?
Yeah, I, without knowing more detail than I do, I think really to increase reliability and the predictability of the system and to increase the redundancy of the system. It really is about investment, and investment in a way that's going to return lots of resources in the future. So I think eliminating those single points of failure and increasing the reliability of the system is the best investment for that. And I feel that that is an opportunity that hasn't been leveraged as fully, and communicate that, and communicate the importance of it. I think part of it is we don't fully always appreciate those systems and how they function until they don't. And so that is one of the, I mean, Pittsburgh has been around for a long time, and we haven't invested in those systems. And that is something that involves communication, but it also involves increasing the reliability and response of the system. And that can be monetized. I think we can do a better job of communicating the public good, and that's part of what I was talking about, is to monetize that. There's a way to talk about what that offers and be very transparent about the way that those investments are made. And I would be specific about the framing. It's not spending its investment, you know, because we all benefit from it. But we have to do a better job of communicating that. And we can also learn from other cities that have gone through some of those transitions. I think that's important to do in our communication. So a lot of what you hear me saying is about really communicating and bringing entities together to understand the common good in a better way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for your willingness to serve. This is a very critical authority that you're going to be coming onto, so. I don't have any questions, I'm just thanking you for your willingness.
Thank you.
With that, we'll dismiss you at this point. Thank you for being here with us this morning. We're going to move on to the Civic Design Committee.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to ask Ms. Arium Ford, Ms. Lisa Carver, and Megan Ziegler to please come forward. I'll ask the clerk to read the bills, and then we'll turn it over to you all to introduce yourselves.
Bill, excuse me, Bill 1131, resolution appointing Arium Ford as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1132, resolution appointing Lisa Carver as a member of the Civic Design Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. And Bill 1133, resolution appointing Megan Ziegler as a member of the Civic Design Committee and the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll begin with Ms. Ford. If you would introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, we'll go down the line, then we'll turn it over to members.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for having me. My name's Arium Ford. I'm the Executive Director of Grounded Strategies, a Pittsburgh-based land justice organization focused on reclaiming vacant land across the city and ensuring that the equity and value of those improvements stay as close to the community as possible. I'm really excited to be here. My background is in city planning. I have a Master's in City Planning from Boston University and a Bachelor's of History from the University of Virginia. And I'm incredibly excited about the role that I can play in helping to hopefully renegotiate our public contract, social contract around public space, who's allowed there, what's allowed there, what standards are, and who are allowed to help set those standards. So thank you for having me here.
My name is Megan Ziegler. I'm with Green Building Alliance. I'm excited to be here. My background is actually in landscape architecture, and I have served since living in Pittsburgh. I worked at Grounded for four years, worked at PWSA for over four years, and now I've been at GBA for almost four years. So I feel like I have a good understanding about what it's like to work on both the community side, in the city side, and also in the nonprofit side. So I'm very excited about this. I've been in front of what is the former Art Commission many times, and so excited to kind of serve and make sure that we're doing what we can to help the residents of the city of Pittsburgh.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Carver. I'm a principal with PWWG Architects. We are based here in Pittsburgh, just down the street, actually on Boulevard of the Allies. My background is in architecture. I'm a principal architect and have been practicing for almost 20 years. Through that practice, I've been involved in multifamily housing, hospitality, university, and many historic preservation projects. Like my colleagues here, I've been a participant of the previous Art Commission and am excited to be involved in seeing that evolution with the current administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from members?
Yeah, sure. So I'll just ask a question just for everybody here, and you can all answer, is when it comes to public art, right, and how, where do you see finding the balance between, you know, building the spaces and the structures, whatever that may be, right, all the things that we need to build in a city, the functionality and making, but also including the design elements, artistic elements, whatever, that make them sort of pleasurable to experience, right, in addition to being functional? But making those two things work together so that one is not impeding the other, right? So that, so that, yeah, so do you understand what I mean? Okay, yeah. Go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I'll jump in. Again, with my background, I would like to consider myself to be a pragmatic person, and so I try to come at my own projects with that balance. Of course, architects are artists in their own right, but buildings need to be functional and they need to be usable by the people that are within them. So I think, depending on the strengths of the group, we will find that balance to make sure that the properties that are within the right of way, that are owned by the city, advance the public realm in a way that benefits the overall community as well, so.
As someone who used to run a landscaping business, I think a lot of the value comes in how things will be maintained over time and how they can hold up. And so I think, you know, really trying to find that balance between pushing the boundaries of what is creative, but also in a way that can be maintained over time and really hold its integrity, I think, would be a really important thing as a part of this commission.
I think that I would lean towards trying to have the conversations and deliberations reflect the humanity that we all experience. So, for example, I love metaphors. So we all live in a house, right, and we need to make sure that, or many of us live in a house, conversation for a different time, that it works, that there's a roof. But that doesn't mean that you don't necessarily decorate it for your daughter's birthday, or that you don't put up lights around the holidays. So there's this balance between making sure that there is form and function, but also that the spaces and places where we, our lives happen, and that create the backdrop to our memories, is how I like to see it, reflect the culture that we see in ourselves. And so I think that, just like you would do it for your own lives, like when we come together to make decisions about public space, space that we all have to live in together, trying to find that balance by reflecting how you might go about it as an individual.
And then I also just, I'm curious about, so with a lot of new development that we see, right, there's sort of this like cookie-cutter element, right, where all of our cities are starting to look the same. And I'm not from, I didn't grow up in Pittsburgh, so, and I know that there's a lot of concern about preserving the feel of Pittsburgh. So I don't know if you have any comments about that, about how your role could help to preserve that feel, but also bring us into the modern age, whatever, you know?
The character of Pittsburgh is very unique, and I think even from a sustainability standpoint, preserving the buildings and that embodied carbon is always, should be something that's always considered. And I would love to see a case made for why they can't preserve it and really kind of push that a little bit more, because I think if you do start kind of tearing that fabric out of our city, we are really losing something that we'll never get back. So I think preservation is a huge part of what we should be striving for as part of this commission and review process.
I'd say that I think we need to have a more persistent, ongoing conversation as a city about our preferences and like what represents us. And I think that having, you know, strong leadership in city planning and the organizations and departments that govern those conversations on a regular basis, but really trying to reach maximum engagement and feedback at the community level about, you know, what does the city aesthetic represent to you, and does the city's aesthetic represent you, and has it ever represented you, and is there change needed there? And so kind of, again, using this opportunity to ask those kind of Socratic questions of specific projects that you can tell whether or not folks have kind of gone through that mental process about identity and representation, as well as, and how they've strived to achieve that in any one particular project. So really, the community engagement, the ongoing back and forth, the caring really loudly at each other, I think that's all really valuable and needed in order to maintain an authentic aesthetic across the city.
When it comes to art and design around the city, just your thoughts on, A, how we give our own local artists and designers, right, the platform and the space to do what they do, and then also how we continue to build up those skills here in Pittsburgh, whether that's bringing new people or working with our young people? Just any thoughts, about how this commission could do that?
Yeah, I think that it's going to be a tricky piece because we do want our local population's creativity to come through. And so I don't, and so somehow, we want to enhance that and not necessarily quash it, right? So we have to be deliberate in the feedback that we provide, but, I'm not sure where I'm going with that, but somehow also keep a pulse on potentially what others are doing in other communities to make sure that we are elevating properly within the city.
I think I would say, on the same lines, really supporting and uplifting Pittsburgh's artists and the host of collectives that are here, supporting their ideas and efforts, giving them literal space to just kind of be and to engage. giving them literal space to just kind of be and, and to engage the public. In the same sense, supporting their role as almost ambassadors to other communities, to maybe go and bring back those, those concepts and ideas as a trusted kind of beacon of, of, of information and aesthetic for Pittsburgh. I think that could be a really interesting relationship that, again, supported by the city, supported by the commission, using social and political leverage to, again, drive resources in their direction. So I think that could be a really interesting tactic.
Very much. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here and your willingness to serve. I'm really glad to see all three of you here today. And on that last point, I'll just say, I met with this Greater Pittsburgh Arts Council yesterday to that, you know, on that point, and I haven't even gotten the chance to talk with our city planning, our planners and our planning staff and leadership about this, but the idea of having, you know, housing for artists that also includes, you know, workspace that also include, you know, workspace or studio space that also includes rehearsal space, right, that seems like something that we should just continue to be talking about and prioritizing as we talk about other important priorities, like housing and affordability of housing. So on, on that sort of tangent, and kind of back into my original thoughts and questions, we were talking a little bit about balance, and I appreciated your answers to that. And, you know, this idea of needing a balance between moving our city forward in some direction, right, which could be, everyone has a different concept of what that means, and, you know, preservation of what makes Pittsburgh Pittsburgh in some degree, that's also tied up in the idea that I think you're alluding to a little bit, right, of, you know, of needing more, to build more housing or density in strategic areas, and also, you know, needing to be responsive to the community when community is sometimes protective of a certain type of, you know, vision of what housing means, oftentimes single-family zoning or single-family housing, which does an advance some of the other greater priorities of the city. So like those types of tensions, or the, the tension of like needing to get the, the new development built, because it will provide so many benefits, but they're not seeming to be the, the impetus, the push, or the, or the support necessary to include, not just add on, but to include all of the other things that are necessary. I mean, if every new kind of project is its own project by itself, right, and it's not thinking holistically, to include items like sustainability and, you know, net zero energy and art, public art, or art, you know, incorporated in that, in the design, or, you know, community benefits. So in, with those types of examples in mind, is there anything else you'd like to add to your original answer around, like, balance? Just kind of what you're thinking in terms of those, or where do you think this sort of subset of the commission could be influential in that way? Understanding it's a new, it's a new commission, and it's not going to be all of what you focus on, but, but appreciate your, any thoughts or reactions?
Yeah, no, I mean, I've said it on a lot of development review, as with our organization, with city planning staff. And so I think just constantly pushing them to allow their designers to think creatively about how you do weave in climate change, and how you do weave in the cultural legacies, or righting those wrongs as they need to be in the city. And I think just constantly just advocating and trying to get the projects to think a little bit more creatively on how they can weave multiple issues into a design, and kind of have that be a, telling a better story, I think would be.
Just a reminder, everyone, if, you can be right up on the, for the folks at home listening, yeah. Thank you. I heard footsteps behind me, and I knew that that was what he was going to do, yeah.
I didn't know how sensitive they were.
I think I would go even deeper, and my initial thought would be to say, like, following the money, right? So I, I know that for a lot of investment and the developments, they may be on city-owned land, but there are a host of funding sources, correct? Some including private equity, public equity, grants, X, Y, Z. Personally, I think really the best way to get full, authentic inclusion and buy-in for that balance is to diversify the investor base and who is included in those investors. At Grounded, we're looking at, in partnership with lots of folks like Amicello Cares, shout out to Joshua Pollard, how can communities actually be in part of investing in their communities with their own dollars, and then instead getting essentially the same say and right as other investors in design process? The designers get a check, who's it coming from, that's who they're answering to. And so why, how, how can we diversify who is in that investor class, either individual or collective, because what that translates into is real power at that, those decision-making points, but also responsibility of getting a project done, equalizing everybody's kind of incentive to move forward on something. And so rather than it being, oh, the developer against the community, I think we have opportunity to move forward and encourage a strategy across people bringing projects to try to diversify your funding base, and then you will, from the bottom up, all of your decisions will kind of follow that goal of, and authentically represent communities, because they will literally be bought in. So I think that could be a really interesting tactic, again.
That was all I had. Thank you. That's all. You know, just solving, planning Pittsburgh, that's all. No, thank you. I appreciate your willingness to serve.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, but you made comments. You mentioned sort of creating spaces that are designed for all of us to feel comfortable in. You mentioned sort of diversifying your investor base. And so with that in mind, I'm not sure how the Civic Design Committee is going to touch upon various developments within our city, but just so you're aware, there's a fairly large development a stone's throw away from us in the Lower Hill. And much of the conversation, or at least much of the conversations that I've been having, is how to ensure that that space is intentionally designed and built out to both recognize what was once there, as well as looking to the future, but even more importantly, ensuring that little brown boys and girls feel equally as comfortable on that site at all hours of day as penguins fans, as corporate tenants will be. And a lot of that occurs through civic design and public art, for those who will come forward with the Public Art Committee. And so, again, it's not a question, but it's a conversation that I hope you all are willing to dive into, to ensure that we are indeed making a very unique place that is comfortable for everyone to be in, recognizing sort of the cultural legacy, repairing the wrongs, as well as moving us into the future. So you can have a comment if you want. If not, that's okay. But I would look forward to having this conversation with you all. And there are other developments, too, but that one, I'm actively engaged in. So I just wanted to put that on your, on the radar for you.
I do know that there was a conversation last week specifically about the Lower Hill and trying to incorporate more green space, but having the conversation on, should it be in the public realm versus private realm, and just being aware that the safety issues and making sure the welcomeness is going to be at the forefront of, of the residents is really critical. So yes, I, I am aware, and I'm excited to lean in on those conversations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also really appreciate you pointing to that example. And my personal take on it will be more of a examining of the, the no culture of our public spaces. So no sitting, no skating, no smoking, no drinking, no loitering, and leaning more into a yes culture and making it just as explicit as, what if we had yes signs that said, yes laughter, yes running, yes playing, yes being here. And really trying to, on a very basic level, actually explain that this is your space, you are allowed here, and through the simplest things such as that, I think can make a huge difference. And so just kind of bringing that yes mindset into those conversations and calling out the no mindset and how really that is a vestige of an elitist, white supremacist culture in public design, it will move us a, a long way forward. So I'm really excited for that.
So, since, well, so I like that idea. Two weeks ago, the preliminary land development was before the planning commission, and it got amended, and it will eventually come to this table, where I may take some deeper dives into it, because, and even meeting with the developer, part of the conversation was ensuring that as we design this sort of public open space that is privately owned, just for the record, that literally our conversation was, can I bring my blanket down here, set up shop, and have a, and have a little cookout for myself, right? Like, will I feel comfortable? Will I be allowed to do that? Or will you be able to say, actually, this is privately owned public space, therefore you need to leave? So those are issues that are very real currently on the table and before us. And so, again, as we move forward, I look forward to hearing more and getting your insight in how, in how to ensure these sort of things, more yeses occur than no's. So, thank you all. With that, thank you for being here. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We're going to move on to the Public Art Committee, and I'm going to ask Celeste Smith to please come forward, Christine Betha, Michael Awuna, I hope I did not mispronounce your name, and Tom Mosser to please come forward. We will begin with the clerk reading the bills, and then I believe we'll start with Ms. Smith and go down the lines, same as those before you. Introduce yourself a little bit, information you want to share.
Bill 1134, resolution appointing Celeste Smith as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1135, resolution appointing Christine Betha, Bethia, as a member of the, excuse me, as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. Bill 1136, resolution appoint, appointing Michael Awuna as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. And Bill 1137, resolution appointing Tom Mosser as a member of the Public Art Committee of the Public Art and Civic Design Commission for a term concurrent with that of the mayor.
Turned over.
Good morning. My name is Celeste Smith. I am a wife, a mother, a student, a child. I currently work at the Pittsburgh Foundation as a senior program officer for arts and culture, and I am also co-founder of One Hood Media, which works at the intersection of arts activism in terms of building liberated communities.
Good morning. My name is Mikel Awuna, and I'm an artist, born and raised here in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I, my work spans across a multiple, a number of disciplines, including photography, film, digital animation, sculpture, live performance, and also public artwork. And so I've had the great honor of creating public art installations across the country, including at institutions like the Contemporary Art Museum Raleigh, in Pittsburgh, at Pittsburgh International Airport, to billboards on Route 20, digital billboards on Route 28. I also currently have a installation with the Pittsburgh Symphony Orchestra, a 1,200-square-foot mural that you could see on the back of Heinz Hall today. And I'm also working with the Andy Warhol Museum with a new installation with the Pop District as well. And so it's a great honor to be considered for this commission, and I'm excited for today's conversation.
Hello, Christine Bethia. I'm also honored to be appointed to this commission. I have been a media artist for over 20 years. I've worked in fiber and also salvage, so I'm a dumpster diver. Don't come and get me. And I'm, oh, thank you. Okay, and I currently serve on the board of the Pittsburgh Glass Center, and I am also president of Women of Visions Incorporated. Women of Visions is an African-American women's arts organization, and is the longest-running visual arts organization for women of color in the entire country. So it's right here in Pittsburgh. So I also have served on the board of ELDI and also Friendship Development when it was around. So I do have a pretty good working knowledge of community art, and, you know, how they need to work together in the process. So thank you again.
Hi, I'm Tom Mosser. I have a studio in Etna, Pennsylvania. I've been a full-time artist for, since the mid-'90s. The only job I ever had was the, I was the Pirate Parrot mascot for the Pittsburgh Pirates for eight years back in the '90s, so I, because I can dance. So my whole, whole, during that time, I had a studio on the south side of Pittsburgh in Stroh's Building. So the only, every dollar that I've made essentially is made on creativity. So my criteria, whatever, I, 2005, I created the Two Andes mural with Sarah Zeffro, it's a couple blocks away, depicts Andy Warhol and Andrew Carnegie getting a makeover. It led to me getting commissioned to do a 200-foot by 30-foot mural at Presidential Center Arena in Newark, New Jersey. It's the largest interior mural in the world, and thanks to a lot of Dunkin' Donuts coffee, we got it through, but it was because of the Two Andes mural that led to this. But I'm proud to be part of this potential committee. A few years ago, I gave a commencement speech at my high school, Huntington area High School. Five years before that, I had given the commencement speech there, too, but it was a new administration and a new school body, so they got, I got a second chance. And I was having a coffee with a friend of mine, and he said, Tom, how are you going to, to inspire the minds of these young kids? What would be the one word that would encapsulate your speech? And I said, I have no idea. And I thought, that's it, idea. That is the most important word in any language. Everything we do, me going like this, is an idea. The big ideas, joining city council, the little ideas, what outfits we are going to wear, we all need to give ourselves permission to cultivate our ideas and make them happen. And mixing other people's ideas in a big pot or on your palate, great things can happen. So I think Warhol said, art is all around us. I say, ideas are all around us. And I think that would bring that attitude to this committee. So thanks for having me.
Very much. Members?
Thank you. Well, thank you for your willingness to serve. And I should have said this together, as I don't take lightly the time commitment that, that you're willing to put in to serve in this capacity and in, in a way that is so crucial for the future of our city. And I think about the new policies that city council has approved that will allow for percent for art to extend to communities that might not be experiencing the same type of investment, public or private, and in development boom that others have. It makes sense, after thinking about it for a half a second, that of course, you know, art will follow development in that, in that particular, in that particular instance. And so how do you think about not just that particular policy, but the ways in which the city, this commission can continue to, to put equity at the forefront of public art, even in, you know, in, in private spaces, but, but specifically public art, reaching, you know, all neighborhoods, all residents of the city in a way that is accessible for everyone, you know, and just in the way that there's the priority of a green space, a park, and within a 10-minute walk from, for everyone in the city, every resident in the city, extending that to, to public art as well. Thoughts about ways that you and this commission can achieve that, or that the city can achieve that more broadly?
Well, I think anytime you go into a neighborhood and you see a huge mural, wherever neighbor, you know, it inspires a dialogue, and you know that people live there, and there's, it just has great impact, and it's worth, a place worth visiting. And you'll see a coffee shop pop up, and then it becomes a place to gather, and it can be inspired by a, by a work of art. And everything in this room was a piece of art. It was somebody designed this microphone, this table, our outfits, these chairs. Everything around us was, is art-based and creativity-based, and we all need to be able to bring that mindset to bringing art to every neighborhood, whether it might be downtown, or in, in Homewood or somewhere. And And it resonated when you said you were talking about providing residences for artists. I live at the Spinning Plate Artist Loft in Shadyside. I've been there for seven years. I'm getting married, so I'm moving out this month. But it was life-changing for me. It was really affordable. And during that period of time, great things happened. So that's also something that really resonated with me, public housing for artists, art-related people.
Well, for me, when you talk about equity, equity for me begins with process. And I think it's really important to get the community involved right at the beginning. And I would always want to know what the community said, you know, and what input they had into the art. Because when you're creating art for a community, if you don't, you know, have their ideas in mind or sort of brush them off, and I have seen that happen in communities. You start out with the best of intentions, but somehow it gets lost in the process. And I would definitely want to see that those things mesh and that the, the voices of the people who are actually going to have the public art have been heard and honored.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's really beautiful about Pittsburgh is that each of the neighborhoods has such a unique character as well. And so I think one of the pieces that I'm really interested and curious about is how does the artists who are working in communities understand the local context and history? And I think related to your question about equity, it does come down to the community engagement aspect. You know, it's like, how much is the community engaged in those conversations about the formation of the artwork from the very beginning? I'm currently also working on a commission, on a commission for the Homewoods, Homewoods New Park that's being designed. And it's been really exciting because even before we've even, I mean, starting months ago, we've been in community meetings, meeting, discussing with different community leaders, going to events. And so for me, as an artist who's gone through that process, that's something that I'm really intentional about and also thinking about when I'm, you know, if we are going to be reviewing applications, what has been that community engagement process that's really intentionally focused and uplifted the community voices?
In harmony with my colleagues, I would offer that there's already been art there. This, you know, this commission or what the city intends to do does not start. The art has always been there. And so, you know, leaning into the fact that, you know, the public art is already, it's just how, what lens are we applying? So that's when you bring the racial justice in, right? Communities always bring art to their communities. I love the idea of there being a portion of funds to work to support artists. We always talk about individuals leaving the city. Artists are no different. Sometimes more welcomed outside of the city. And so how can we work, you know, not only to encourage people to stay and support and build more beautiful communities, but also being able to pay individuals to do so? When you talk about the time commitment of this committee, and I, you know, don't even know the complete time commitment, but I do know that I have a job that is outside of the artwork that I do. And so you think about how much work artists do, how much artists put in. And then what are we doing, you know, to really adequately pay people for what they're doing? Not only, you know, to benefit themselves, but entire community.
I think I got, I think I got paid $2,000 for the Two Andys mural with Sarah and I. But it led to me getting this project in New Jersey. And I ended up doing 50 pieces of work with that project. But it also, I was collaborating with a team of artists that I brought in. There was one, I paint with both hands at the same time and I had, I didn't want any flat color on this mural. So I had to teach my team to paint with both hands and it was all going to be brushstrokes. And then we had, we would, I devised a plan where we'd go shoulder to shoulder, then we'd switch sides. So our work was coming together as one. It was, it was a real lesson in collaboration and it's a real metaphor for what you're doing. You know, you're working on a project, you're collaborating, switch sides. Look at it from a different point of view. That person's brushstrokes might be a little different than yours, but you kind of blend in and combine and something great happens because of collaboration. So collaboration is a big part of public art as well. And keeping it simple to get that message out. The Two Andys mural is a simple image, two men at a hair salon underneath hair dryers. Andrew Carnegie's getting a manicure, pedicure? Manicure. And Andy Warhol's reading a magazine, but they're, they're stuck talking to each other. What would these two men talk about? Andy Warhol and Andrew Carnegie, the two Andys. And we all, and again, it's about collaboration and coming up with creative solutions. There's always a solution to everything.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warburg?
Yeah, I just, first of all, I want to say I'm a little starstruck by this group of people. So it's really exciting to meet you all in person. I think I'm Facebook friends with most of you, but we've never met. So, at any rate, thank you for being here and for your willingness to serve. I do have just two questions. The, the first one, well, the first one's sort of more of a practical question. When it comes to public art in community spaces, how, what, how, how do you see the, or how, how do you think the art commission could, you know, in, in your role, how could we empower communities to beautify their spaces with, with art in terms of? I mean, I'm thinking, for example, I know in, in my district in Hazelwood, there's a desire to do some like painting on the street, sort of incorporating traffic calming and, and painting on the street. But it's, you know, it's tricky. That costs money and you need grants and all these, you know, and there's also code issues. And is there a way that this committee could help sort of usher, you know, usher those projects through with communities? Or just any thoughts that you might have on, on how the committee could help streamline those processes? If there are communities who want to do a particular thing, whether it be a mural or a this, or, you know?
Well, to your point, resources are always an issue. Like you said, the cost and the money. And I found out that I'm really good at resourcing. So I think maybe the commission could take some time to find out who's willing to partner, donate, Pittsburgh Paints, whoever, and try to get some more maybe in-kind things available for people. And maybe have that as a list that's available to the communities as they go to do public projects. That would be one thought for me, would be do a little bit more resourcing and see who wants to partner with the city.
I mean, you could have, this is off the top of my head, it's an idea. I share a studio with Andrea Chavaria. I've been mentoring her for 20 years. She's a proud graduate of the Western Pennsylvania School for the Deaf. She's, she's beautiful and she's very smart. Just the idea of, of putting in a, a public request for people to have house paint in their garages. They're piling up, not using them. Donate their house paint to a specific area. And the art, we could cultivate all the house paint and try to organize them to use for murals for no cost at all. That would be something that could be very powerful and helpful. If you have old house paintbrushes from that, from that living room project and yet they're sitting in your garage, turn in your old brushes. We'll use them. We'll take them to Homewood and create a mural. Maybe for not much money at all. So, and then kind of build upon that. I'm very good at like creating art with as little money spent as possible. You'd be surprised what you can come up with. And then, and then you can start getting the PPG paints of the world to start donating too. But people have a lot of house paint in their garages. Let's, let's turn them in, put them to use.
Thank you for your question. I think specific to what we could do with our commission, you know, I think we would be a resource for people to actually submit proposals. And I think that's probably where we could serve in the best capacity. And so I think, I believe that there already is an online portal where people can submit proposals to the Public Art, the Public Art Commission. But I think it also requires us to maybe take a look at that, make sure that it's as accessible as possible, the language is really accessible, and also sharing it with as broad, a broader subset of the community as possible. So also sharing it with council members who can then distribute it to their, to their community members or so that they know that they're working on a project of some sort. They'll, you can tell them, you know, "We have this, this public art commission. You can submit your proposal." And then it then becomes part of an official city project that can then move through all of those, that red tape and all those regulations. And so I think that's probably where we could probably serve in the best capacity.
I think as we began to, our work together, we have to test our assumptions of what we think to what the community might need. I think there has to be some dialogue, you know, to understand really what the needs are, what the desires are. And, you know, dream alongside our community and to bring in those things into fruition. You know, and I, I really want to still look at what community is, right? Because we, we are all living all together. We are all seeing each other at the supermarket, whatever, right? And so, yeah, we can absolutely hit the people up who got paintbrushes and paint in their garage. But we can also work in community with people who have access, you know, to equipment, people who have access to the tools and that we need to be able to produce the art. And so, you know, as we test our assumption, we build new relationships. And we really listen actively in terms of what artists want, what artists need, and then we can provide it. But if we guess, we won't ever hit the mark. I think we always have to ask for us.
And another question I have is, well, I don't know if it's so much a question as an idea. I just sort of would want to bounce off this group is, in particular, so I, I notice in terms of content, there seems to be, like with so many things, sort of inequity in representation and in the actual content itself. One, one thing that, that jumps out at me in particular is in, in sort of the subject of, of gun violence in the city, right? Where we have so much around, for example, the Tree of Life, which, you know, is a terrible tragedy, but then so little around all the other types of gun violence that are happening in the city. Is there a way that, how, how do you see the commission functioning to kind of make sure that when we're, when we're addressing a topic, right? When we're creating a piece of art that sort of addresses an issue that affects the city as a whole, that we do it in a way that really represents the issue citywide? Does that make sense?
Just, the morning of the Tree of Life shooting, I was driving to State College for a, I had a little art show at a little art gallery there and it was on a Saturday. It was on a, there was a football game there. I drove past the Tree of Life around 6:30 in the morning. And I remember I was at the stop line. I just, it just kind of had impacted the, the design of the building, just kind of struck me. And you know what happened that day? When I came, I came back the same afternoon after the show and I drove through Squirrel Hole and the world had changed. It was just so, so impactful somehow. I don't, the, with the issue of gun violence is pretty powerful and we've all noticed it, especially this year. I just have this thought of having people turn in their guns and we paint the guns and we make this huge, beautiful sculpture out what, with, from guns, from this like sort of very negative aspect of guns and transition it into something beautiful. But again, with art, public art, dealing with that issue, having a, a pop-up show where people would turn in art related to the gun issue just to bring awareness and, and attention to it. Art can be powerful and you get groups of people creating art to bring it more of a spotlight onto something. I think that would be really something to consider, the gun, the gun violence situation.
I think that for our role, I, I think we have a really great opportunity to like take a look at the proposals that come through, that come through the commission and make sure that they really adequately address the question of the equity of representation and also should, making sure that they showcase the, really the breadth of any issue. And I think that for me personally, that's something that I've been really deeply invested in in terms of the commissions that I've done across the city, really thinking about the local context. But as you said, you know, it's, you know, I think we have a responsibility as commissioners to be thinking about, you know, how is this touching on issues that touch the entire city? And making sure that the artwork that's there is responsive as well. And so that's something that, you know, I've worked on as an artist and would be deeply committed to as well.
I also feel like this is probably an area where looking outside the city for inspiration would be helpful. It would be interesting to see how some other cities may have done it. Of course, Pittsburgh always has this wonderful and unique way of doing things. But I think that, that would be informative and helpful to us.
Again, in, in harmony with others, you know, cosigning the piece of talking to community and saying what people want. But also wondering the opportunity to speak of arts commissions. Because, you know, like we watched in DC, painting black last matter down the middle of the street didn't change nothing, right? And so, you know, this is a piece of it. It's a piece, representation absolutely important. But not that this piece of, a public art piece would be the end-all, be-all and, "Oh, now we post-racial and the world is fabulous," right? But just being clear as a commission that this is a part of it, but also advocating for the other pieces that need to be elevated. Because it's not sufficient to paint a picture or a road. There has to actually be change.
And then I have one, one, just one last sort of thought. Just to kind of, I guess, sort of a thought is, is the idea of building sort of interactivity into public art, whether that be interactivity in the making of the art or interactivity in the actual artwork itself. I think that, you know, a lot of the time there's, you know, you have public art and it's sort of there, but it's kind of, it sort of just becomes part of the woodwork like quite a lot, you know? One, one piece that jumps to mind, if you've seen the Holocaust Memorial at Community Day School, it's, I mean, it's really, so they took the tabs from Coke cans and over, what, like 10 years? I'm not sure. They, the students at the school collected these tabs and then they're in, whatever. It's, it's really great. Should go by. But just the idea that these kids collected over 10 years, collected these tabs, and then they put them in the artwork. And so that, those 10 years of kids, every time they go by that piece, it's, you know, not only is it a memorial of the Holocaust, it's also just a, a memory for them, like they were part of that. I think that's something that I would love to see more of in, you know, when we're coming up with, when we're taking in proposals or, or, or putting out, I don't know, would you do an RFP for art? I don't know if you do that, but, you know, in the, in the criteria.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think that's something I'm very excited about. Actually, when I began working as an artist, I actually lived in Taiwan for a year. And I worked with Taiwanese Aboriginal students, teaching them photography and then leading them through exercises in which they actually used cameras to then tell the story of their community, local myths, history and culture. And that was then exhibited as a exhibition at the National Taiwan Museum. And so I've thought about kind of that community engagement aspect, which is very exciting. And also thinking about, as you said, there's a lot of new developments. You know, I saw, I studied engineering in college. And so I'm very up to date with a lot of the new developments in terms of interactivity, computer vision, artificial intelligence that can, and sensor, using depth sensors that can allow you to create artwork in public spaces that can also be responsive and interactive to people moving through the space and interacting with the work as well. And that's something that I've actually started kind of doing some research on and work with as well. And so that's, that's something I'm really top of mind and very exciting for me.
Yeah, to my colleague's point, there's so many different kinds of art forms now. And I think that we can be a lot more creative than we have in the past and just thinking about cement and metal. And I think you have an opportunity here to, you know, do something very unique for communities that, you know, can last change and even morph over time that you couldn't do before with the, you know, usual traditional art.
Also look at the idea that you just presented as a way to, to build a living archive of what is happening in the communities. I don't think we do as good of a job of documenting equitably all of the stories that Pittsburgh has to offer. And so, you know, in building something where the children are building on it, the elders are building on it, it gives this cohesive story of what is happening in, in real time, but also in the past. And so I think it's something that we absolutely could entertain. You know, always looking for, you know, for what the community, which you also are part of, is looking to see in our city.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
I mean, you could come up with an idea where, your idea of bringing in an object or having people do a self-portrait, and once a year you get together, people bring in this object or a self-portrait, and you keep adding to this public art installation, but you have an annual event to keep re-energizing. And so it's a big mural, and that's it, but each year it gets changes and evolves, and you have this annual event to keep bringing attention to whatever issue you're talking about. That's an idea, it just came to me. So, everything's an idea, so. The coffee's kicking in this morning, so.
Super. Well, thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you. Thank you all for your willingness to serve, and sorry that I missed the others. But I actually have quite a few things. Any of the appointees do you know of from the west, southwest Pittsburgh, or where do you all live?
East Liberty.
Island Park.
Highland Park.
Friendship, East Liberty, essentially.
And the other ones, before I look and see, because when we talk about diversity, I always remind people there's geographic diversity as well. And the west, southwest Pittsburgh is not represented on a lot of the boards and authorities as they should be. When we are putting people on, we should make sure that we have people from all across the city of Pittsburgh represented. So I, it's something I've probably hounded every mayor since I've been here.
What is the southwest, Jenny, what neighborhoods are in this?
Mount Washington, Duquesne Heights, South Side, South Shore. The, I mean, that's even concerning, I mean, to me.
I lived in South Side six years, though.
Where did you live?
I lived in a...
No, South Side, is that what you said?
Yeah, I lived in South Side, you know, it's like five years ago.
So, well, at least you have some familiar...
Yeah, the good news is, a lot of us have lived in a lot of neighborhoods, too. You know, I mean, like I lived in Lincoln Lamar for many, many years, so, keep that in, yeah.
No, that's great. I was born and raised on the east end, so just so you know, okay? But my concern is that there needs to be also a voice from our current, currently from Southwest River. And actually, I think there should be one from north, south, east, west, and central of the city for all the boards and authorities, just period. And so I thank you for your willingness to serve. It's nothing about you, and it's nothing about this not isolated to one administration. Since I've been here, this is the way it's been. But now that I actually put the appointments forward in my, under my committee, I'm going to be more mindful of some of those things. And I have been, actually, I think, for quite a few. And honestly, I love this idea. I actually did a lot of work with young people, and I started a cultural district to art committee, which was bringing artists and awareness of art and the desire for more art, public art in our district. And my niece is actually an artist, she is a professor at the University of Berkeley, but she's, she does digital art. And so I don't know, I'm not real familiar, but she tries to explain it all to me when she's, I mean, she's from Berkeley. She explains, there's a lot that she, you know, has a lot to say. But she's, her knowledge is just so, so vast. But one of the things she does is document history. And the city of Pittsburgh actually contacted her once to come to advise them and consult with them, but she didn't take it, it was a position she didn't take. But I mean, it would be nice to, so maybe just make some connections with her and maybe the director, and go from there. But one of the things that I did, you know, is I tried to get young people involved. And as we talked about how the importance it does play, and maybe there's kids that don't like basketball, maybe there's kids that like basketball and art, maybe there's kids that just like, I mean, just to make sure that we're reaching kids with different abilities and different things that might keep them off the streets and keep them in a safer place. To me, I think that that's some of the things that we should be focusing on. And I have people, you know, kids that really do have an interest, and I'd like to, you know, engage them a little bit more. And actually, one of them did pass away from gun violence, and he was probably the most talented of a lot of the kids that we had, it's just he couldn't get away from the streets. But for, for me, I think it's, I want to see more, and I'm thinking of maybe with the digital art, maybe we partner with Lamar and do some things that they can do, you know, with the billboards, the electronic billboards that they have, maybe they'll make them less obnoxious, I think, in some cases. But I think that the, one time we had in our district, and so, when you talk about engaging the public, that's an interest to me, because I want the public engaged, but I also want to make sure council stays engaged. And if that doesn't happen, we'll revisit, you know, what we have to do, because I, I'm not going to go through what we went through before. Poor Sarah in the back there, she did all kinds of work. She had all the public meetings, everything she was, they were supposed to do, the public was supportive, so we thought, until they went up to put the art up. And we had to get a police officer to get, to escort DPW to remove the art from the area, because the people that lived around it didn't want it. And it was, it was a punch, I think it was like something simple, they just didn't want it. But they had to have a police escort, take it over to a different division, a DPW division, and then they had to escort the artists to get the art out, from what I understand. But all that, and they did all the public art. But I said, I think sometimes we have to make sure that we're also engaging council, because we might know something about that area or something that might be going on, so that we don't ever have an instance like that again, because it was, it was bad. And I felt so bad for Sarah, because she had gone through everything you could possibly go through. I mean, meetings, several meetings, talked to me, sent me emails, and when I saw where it was, I'm thinking, oh no. And honestly, you know who knew better than I did? The DPW workers. They're like, we can't even go back there and clean up, you know, without being accosted. So, so with that said, I think it's important to make sure you engage, you know, not only us, but maybe different divisions in the city before something's approved. That's all. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
There's a tie-in with the sports and the arts. I mean, I work for a company called Sports and the Arts. They curate sports arenas around the, sports arenas around the country. And I have a theme where I'll do logo treatments using traditional oil paint and brushwork or pastels, but I came up with a theme of painting, creating logo treatments using painted basketballs or painted footballs. You roll a basketball or football on canvas or paper, it leaves an imprint of the basketball, leaves, you can see the logo treatments, you can see the seams and dimples. Every movement, I play basketball, every movement on the basketball court is a creative thought. So there is, somebody says, I'm a sports person, I just play basketball. You're, no, you're, you're creative. You, you're, you know, behind the back dribble, between the legs, pop in, pop out, take a hook shot, it's all creative thought. It's all ideas. You could have an event where you bring in kids who are really into basketball in a neighborhood, let's create some mass collaborative painting using basketballs, dribbling basketballs, and see what we can come up with. I think it's pretty messy, but it's, it's super fun.
It sounds like fun to me. But maybe we can get them to work with us, and the mayor's office, who's trying to build additional fields in the city of Pittsburgh, maybe there's some partnership, and I think the mayor would be really interested in that as well, because we're talking about the need for additional ball fields in the communities, and maybe art ball fields and the partnership with the organization.
Create art with baseballs and softballs and soccer balls, volleyballs, all that, it all translates, and it's, it's a fun activity, and when you do it, it's really fun. And it looks cool, too, so media would like it as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all.
I just wanted to ask you one quick question, because I'm very curious about how that, that breakdown happened between the community and the, so there's no current process where you get that last look?
So, it's the darn RCO meetings and the damn meetings and the things that they have, the city planning, and director knows very much how I feel about this. But anyway, when they went through that process, the group doesn't, sometimes CDCs don't represent the residents that live in the communities. And people always assume that that's, that they speak for everybody, and they don't. I mean, they just don't. And I mean, even us, I tell people all the time, you know, we can speak for the public, but it, we have to engage and find out, too, with the public ones, you know, even though we're out there every single day. And so when you have a group, and the guy, to be honest with you, he didn't live in the community, so he, I mean, he did what he was supposed to do, too. Everybody did what they were supposed to do, but it's, I think that process doesn't work. So I would love for that to be reviewed, and we actually have a post agenda coming up about it. So, right, Director, looking forward to it, aren't you?
Thank you.
But she's great, so I think we'll get to a good place. I think we'll get to a good place with it. Thank you. Thank you all for your willingness to serve, I really appreciate it.
You, Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. Welcome, folks. I was listening out in my office.
You heard me say South Hills.
I did, yes. And then, as you said that, I'm working my way here, and I didn't catch exactly where you were all from, but I'm excited to see who's from the South Hills.
But there's others, too, right? We don't know where they're from. They might be from...
East Liberty.
East Liberty.
Island Park.
Island Park.
Yeah, east end as well.
I went from Mount Washington to South Side to Squirrel Hill to Shady Side, now I'm in East Liberty.
Okay, well, at least we had you there temporarily.
Yeah, I'm taking a left. We went to the north side, so I encapsulate all the neighborhoods.
Right. And I know Madam President, she mentioned a few of her neighborhoods, but there's also Brookline, Beechfield, Carrick, Overbrook, Bon Air, all these neighborhoods. So I would love to see a list as to what the art commi, this is art commission, correct? Okay, okay. So I'd love to see that list, because yes, we need representation from the South Hills. I have confidence in all you, if the administration does, you know, I'm fine with, with your appointments. But I just come to address, you know, what you had said, Madam President. I feel, you know, we need representation on every board, no matter the board, in the city of Pittsburgh from the South Hills. Too often, I could have guessed that you were not from the South Hills, I could tell you, because I just tend to know who they are. And very seldomly do I see familiar faces across, when it comes to the art commission, and many other commissions and, you know, committees that come in front of us. So, but you have my confidence, you all sound great, and I just wanted to come out and state that. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. I don't have any questions. Thank you all for your willingness to serve. I do have projects that I hope to bring before you in the very near future, and so I look forward to working with you all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. That was great.
That ends our, that ends our pre-agenda. We need five minutes, yep, five minutes, and then we'll start our standing committee agenda. So, good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023. All council meetings will continue to be live streamed on the city's website. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here, sir.
Six members present.
Thank, I think so. Our, hold on one second. Our first order of business is, we need a motion to waive the rules of council so that we can begin at 11:05?
Senator.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our meeting is now begun. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which are or may be before city council, and profanity will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name and your neighborhood. For the record, you will be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. I do not see Ms. Mullen with us this morning. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bill Suver, Global Intelligence Society, U.S., candidate for president 2024, ctsai.rlm globalintelligence.com is my main email. A concern of this council is clearly art, and art in public spaces.
Okay.
The, the approach that I take to global intelligence uses 21 disciplinary intelligences and information matrices, which includes visual, oral, olfactory, chemical, somatic, tactile. Yesterday, I introduced the compound C55A72MGN4O3. It is the most important compound on earth. I view it as, in fact, looking at it molecularly as a work of art. It is chlorophyll A. There is chlorophyll A, B, C, D, and also, for those of you who are not aware, that chlorophyll is also red. The core is MG of chlorophyll, and is surrounded by 1, 2, 3, 4 in a square nitrogen. This is parallel to the core of hemoglobin in humans. The Fe iron is surrounded with N, 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 N. This is a fascinating connection, and it provides a huge amount of visual content in, throughout the biological material and physical sciences. A second thing that I think, from my point of view, is a work of art, is the, is the basketball playing of LeBron James. I think he's one of the most spectacular players in the history of the NBA. He doesn't need for me to say that, he's surpassed Kareem Abdul-Jabbar at 38,387 for his own scoring record as an individual. He hasn't been connected to too many titles for, by last count. I invented the, the course theory of sport that focused on our three major sports, which includes basketball, which is the most fluid, most complex sport for us to try to diagram. I disagree completely with the man who was talking about trying to do balls and track that like that. That is extraordinarily difficult. But I think that Bill Russell is GOAT. He is the greatest of all time, in the sense that he made everybody better, and that meant that they won lots of games, and they won 11 titles.
Our next registered speaker is Aikahana Halmelkina, who I do not see with us. Our next registered speaker is Atanti Kenning Chaap. I apologize for not pronouncing that correctly.
Greetings and good day. My title is Atanti Kenning Chaap, and I'm an Aboriginal of America and are adjoining island. And I also grew up in this area, which is now known as Pittsburgh. Today I'll be reading from Section 3, Article 13, Rights of Cultural Integrity and Identity of the American Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People Pertaining to My People. First dates, My people have the indispensable right and liberty to reclaim our ancestral cultural identity and integrity, meaning we have the right to reclaim our status and to be the stewards of the lands on which we are autonomous from, of which is the Americas, in whole and in perfect condition, not to be disturbed, as it was said in treaties. It also states, we have the liberty for the protection, preservation, and maintenance, and to the, and to the development of our customs, and to pass on our ways of life of our ancestors and our culture to our posterity. It also states in House Congress Resolution 331, 100th Congress, Second Session, that on page 3, clause 1, that Congress owes a debt obligation to me and My people of these lands for our, for our actions, in which we did for the immigrants who came over here and still reside here to this day. We, I know my time is short, so I'll cut it, I'll attempt to cut it short. We go on to see that you are passing out out of large lump sums from economic assistance programs, as well as forgiving your citizens' medical debts. Though we are here in this area, and we are attempting to facilitate a government-to-government relationship with the city council of this area, to no avail. My question is, when you are doing land development and the like, art in our area and on our lands, will you communicate with us so that we can be the first to have a cut of that path, and so that we can preserve our customs and our culture for our future and for our posterity, and for our collective continuity at this moment? Thank you for your time, thank you for having me, and aye you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Shaman Pohmai.
Greetings and good day. In Lake Alakain, the light in me honors the light in you.
In Lake Alakain, the light in me honors the light in you. I am Aboriginal Native American. I am the Americas, for we are the original Americans, and there can only be one American people on American soil. Although other people who are here now, and have been here for many, many years, let's say decades and even centuries, are calling themselves American, which is very disingenuous and disrespectful, because I can't move to China and obtain citizenship, and now I am Chinese. Neither can any immigrant come from any other land, irregardless how they got here, and call themselves an American. And in fact, they are indeed United States citizens. And I accept that. What I do not accept is forced assimilation. I do not accept genocide. I do not accept racial discrimination or xenophobia, which are all against the Constitution as it relates to our people, Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3, and excluding Indians not taxed, and is supported by many maxims of law, treaties, as well as international law. And the adrift is very clear, rejection of assimilation for our people. Our people have a right to maintain and express, freely develop our cultural identity in all respects, free from any external attempt at assimilation, and states shall not carry out, adopt, support, or favor any policy of assimilation of our people or destruction of our culture. So when you talk about art in our, on our land here, what you call Pittsburgh, we call it the Delaware Territory, as it is still known and acknowledged in our treaty with, or the Treaty of Fort Pitt, either way, it's the same treaty, you must consider, and you must be intentional, so that you include our images and our likeness as we see ourselves and as we've always seen our ancestors. So I encourage you to reach out to us. Most, many of you know how to do that. Also, when it comes to the police and assimilation or forced assimilation and discrimination and genocide, you have not educated your police on the Constitution. And you all have taken an oath to the Constitution to uphold, protect, and defend it, and anything other is treason by your government, not by us. But we are here to enforce our rights on all city municipal officers, agencies, and corporations, as well as the general population. So when we interface with your people, it is important that they know who we are and that they know their obligation of the oath that they took to the Constitution in protecting our rights. And I look forward to continuing, you know, discussions, working with you, as we've worked with many people from other states throughout the United States effectively, and we look forward to doing that here as well, and I yield.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak at this time, please come forward, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You will be given three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at 715 Mercer Street up in the Hill District. Today, when I sat and listened to the speakers that just had, I went and spoke to the one of the artists, and I was telling him to come back and tell each of you personally that you are to listen to the community, you are to bring the community in. If you're going to put art in our community, we should have some say-so. I say, and you just really don't seem like you want to understand how I feel, when I heard Ms. Gross say about the big, such a large community of the police office, the sergeant, the new policeman was supposed to come to every neighborhood. Well, she said her and the mayor decided that they shouldn't, that we would put the Hill District with there, with Bloomfield, you know, with Lawrenceville. Now, what I'm saying is this, if they decided to do that, they could have had the meeting right here in city council. But you made the decision that we had to go to her area, which means two buses. We don't have cars. Up in the seniors, most of us, we don't have cars, so we have to take the bus. In Lawrenceville, they don't really care about cars. You see how you really don't have too much to park, but they have a little community of their own. Go in there, and you'll see, they got the stores, they got this and that. They're not, they're not worried about having a car. We, in this poor neighborhood where we live at, we don't have a bus that can take us to the hospital down the bottom of the hill. And when I go and I try to find out to the county council, because that's who they said I should go, he gonna say, "Coming down here with her agenda." You know what my agenda is? To help the blind, the crippled, and the mentally challenged, to get a bus to the hospital at the bottom of the hill. My daughter takes me, I don't have to worry about it. But I'm worried about the seniors. You know what you just have done? You've thrown us away. We're considered nothing up there. But when Kaylee Wervis died, and I came down here to city council, you just said, "Went to his funeral." You can go to his funeral, but you wouldn't even help him fight for us. I asked his aide, Petit, I said, "Mr. Petit, would they want city council?" He wants city council to be at his funeral or here taking care of the city business? And he looked and he said, "Mr. Wervis would want him here in city chambers, not at his funeral over at the cathedral of learning so everybody could see how, oh, we honor him." But you not honor him if you don't try to help us. He said, "I want a bus." Talking about it was a million dollars to have a bus from the bottom of the hill up to the top. That's not what I said. When I talked to the Penguin, the man that was here, one of his sponsors, he said, "What, Ms. Brown?" He said, "The charter."
Hello, hello. My name is Flora L. Williams. I'm a resident at Kaylee Roy Wervis Towers. And I want to speak about the homeless and our youth, the children. We have children that is supposed to be incarcerated. They're let out, you go home with an ankle bracelet on them, and they are still able to get out and shoot someone. The shooting has to stop. What happened to our city? We used to help one another. We used to want to help one another. It used to be a growing pleasure to help one another. Now, I know people that is sitting among you now that has property that can be used for the homeless, but they choose not to help. They want to sit around and talk about it, talk about different ideas, but don't, nothing concrete, and it doesn't go anywhere. And these young children, we need to get back the name of our city. We used to be so very proud of Pittsburgh. Now we're letting the enemy come and destroy us. We have to get up and do our work and do our job. We just can't sit here and talk about it. We gotta be about it. We need an action plan. Our city, we need to help each other and bring our city back together. We got to work together. Let's be about it. Don't just talk about it. Send help to the homeless and cover our children. There are some good children out there that want something, that wants to grow up to help the city of Pittsburgh, but they're being brought down with the children that don't want anything. Separate them. Do something to help us. We're begging for help for our city. That's what we need, and that's what we want, and that's what we're gonna get. I'm a fighter, and I'm not gonna give up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, that will take us to our standing committee agenda. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, chaired by myself. We have one supplemental paper, Bill 1223.
Bill 1223, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,000 for Payment to the Pennsylvania Department of Labor and Industry for Settlement of a Compliance Matter.
Need a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1108.
Bill 1108, Ordinance Amending Title 2, Article 5, Chapter 237, Stop the Violence Fund, Section 237.03, Uses and Restrictions of the Stop the Violence Fund, directing the mayors designee thereunder, the Office of Management and Budget, and the Director of the Department of Public Safety, to utilize a reporting form approved by city council to ensure proper and legal use of said funds by grantees thereunder in accordance with Ordinance 237, Stop the Violence Fund, of the City of Pittsburgh Code.
Motion to hold for two weeks. And I just want to thank everyone who's working on this together, Ricky Moody, Jay Gilmer, Assistant Director Jones. Do you know who else? You, Reverend Burgess, who else? Any others? Okay, so I just want to thank you all for working on it. So I think we'll have something soon that we can use to hold, so we know that we can explain to the public how the dollars are being spent. Thank you.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Councilwoman Warburg?
Yeah, I just wanted, is there, I mean, during the, I'm not part of the committee working on this, but is it possible simultaneously, just so that we don't have to do it twice, is to come up with a template that we apply to all funds at the same time as we're doing this? Does that make sense? I mean, if we're, if we're creating a reporting structure, a rubric for trust funds, that we do one that can then just be put, so we don't have to have a committee every time we do a new, like, every time there's a new trust fund?
They're working on that. They're already, our budget officer is already working on a reporting mechanism in some way that we can give better reports to the public. This is separate because this is, the money's already going out the door, so that we want to get, make sure that as we're doing that, we have something. But we have to have something for, we're working with the Housing Opportunity Fund, or no, I'm sorry, the Food Justice Fund, and all of our other money that's going outside of the city, outside of the city, so that we can make sure that, especially all the trust funds, too. So we're looking at all the trust funds, and they're actually trying to minimize the trust, some of the trust funds.
So there is a conversation to do that for all funding, but the, these particular set of funds are rather unique, especially in terms of how they're going to get expended and for the purpose. So therefore, they wanted to have a very specific one tailored towards this. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that input, because we were talking about the, I think, at two different budget hearings, that kind of like, what are the appropriate metrics? Who's capturing which of the data? It's really actually difficult to track individuals over time, right? And so the outcomes for the Stop the Violence Fund are really about kind of people's life trajectories and how well they're doing. And so I do feel like this is a specific subject matter area. So I really, I'm kind of happy to see you all working on this, and I look forward to seeing what you come up with.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held two weeks. That takes us to Bill 1149.
Bill 1149, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Max Petrunia, PC, in the Amount of $30,000 in Settlement of Litigation Filed in a U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania.
Motion to approve discussion.
Yeah, this, this bill and several of the bills that have executive session held 2123, I believe we did schedule some of these, but it was never discussed.
We scheduled 1149, 1150, 1151, 1152, and 1153 were all held, were all scheduled last week, and they were all scheduled before the bill concerning our solicitor. Members didn't show up to discuss them.
Some of us did.
So, I apologize.
So we were supposed to stay on to continue?
No, they were before.
They were before.
They were before the bill regarding the solicitor.
So we're gonna hold the bills, and then we'll have, we'll get some information from the administration, something that we feel comfortable with, and then we'll discuss whether or not we put them back on.
Thank you. I know, I apologize on my part, and if when we reschedule them, there could be an email to our staff. It's really hard for all of us to, you know, we're not constantly staring to see events pop up on our online calendars, bit like labeled. I know we all get, our staff get so many emails, we all get so many emails, so I'm happy to make time to schedule it if I can catch it in advance. I apologize.
So I would say, Councilwoman Gross, you're one of the people that, you, Councilwoman Strausberger, are almost always attending the meetings, so I just, and some of you are really good at attending them. But I just want to say, we have this scheduled, and it was probably at a time when we had so much going on, because there was, there has been a lot going on lately, and we're also increasing the amount of, it seems like the amount of executive sessions, and it helps to have a solicitor here with us now. So I think, you know, he's also attending them. So he, when he attends them, he usually advises us in some way. So for this, for this particular thing, I think because there's so many bills, we'll just hold for one week, get some information. If we're not comfortable, we won't let him go back on the agenda.
Councilwoman Strausberger?
Thank you. And I'll just say, I agree with what my colleagues are saying, that there has been a tremendous, tremendous amount of work, and I know the clerk's office does their very best to schedule things during hours and times that are convenient for us, and there's, but there's a lot coming at us all the time, and sometimes it is scheduled very quickly, right? So we have maybe a day or couple of days notice, and if we already have something scheduled, I know when I'm scheduling something, it's two weeks out, because my schedules is booked, you know, hour to hour, every single day with something. So I know that in the past, we had reserved very specific times, like Tuesdays and Wednesday afternoons, or Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, exactly remember the times that we were meant to block out so that we could very easily have those slotted in, but it's like a reserved time for all of us for post-agendas, briefings, executive sessions, and maybe there's an opportunity to get back to that method. Certainly something we can talk about online, but I wanted to bring it up now. Offline, but we could, yeah, whatever, whatever that is.
We understood what you meant. Council, Madam President?
Thank you. And I just want to say, some of these things, I don't think we should be having an executive session for. I think the public has a right to know how we're working on our collective bargaining and what we're doing. I think they have some rights to know, some, especially when we're spending money outside of our own law department, when we have, you know, about 40 attorneys up there, I think the public has a right to know what some of those class are and why we're, why we're going down this road. Maybe not every detail, but there should be some things that we should be able to discuss publicly. But for me, I'm just gonna make a motion, motion to hold for one week, and then we'll work through this with the administration. If we're not comfortable, we won't put him back on, okay? You good with that, too?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held one week.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, is it your intent to hold all remaining executive session bills?
Can you make, hold for all the bills? Yes.
Okay, so would, Madam Clerk, please read 1150, 1151, 1152, 1153 together?
I think except for this one. Did you do 52?
I mean, I'm comfortable voting 52?
52, I'm comfortable with 52. That's a that's for an agreement. That's not, that's not a consult.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you'll read 1150, 1151, and 1153 together?
Bill 1150, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Tucker Orangeberg, PC, in an Amount Not to Exceed $8,933 for Professional Services for an Early Neutral Evaluation Related to Litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1151, Resolution Amending 260 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant, PC, for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by $100,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $490,000. And Bill 1153, Resolution Amending, Resolution 458 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips for legal services in connection with collective bargaining by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $300,000.
Motion to hold for one week.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill will be held one week.
Thank you.
My recommendation, since, would be if we could all maybe try to set aside maybe next Tuesday at noon or 11:30, 11:30 to 1, to try to handle these bills.
I think that's great, yeah.
That leaves us with Bill 1152.
Bill 1152, Resolution Amending 527 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Cohen Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications litigation by increasing the total spend by $50,000 for a new not to exceed amount of $196,050.
Motion to hold for executive session.
No, 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 we're on Bill 1152.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Now we'll go on to our new papers, Bill 1176.
Bill 1176, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Ruth and John Banavitz and their attorneys, Burger and Green, PC, any amount of $80,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Plea.
Motion to hold for executive session. Motion to hold for executive session.
Can I move? Need a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, bill be held for executive session. Bill 1177.
Bill 1177, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Spillman, Thomas &amp; Battle for legal services in connection with a police litigation matter for an amount not to exceed $5,203.50.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Need a motion to approve the invoices?
Can I move?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Need a motion to approve the P cards.
Can I move?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I'd like to make a, we have two more, we have two Post Gazette subscriptions in here. Just, I mean, they're for like seven bucks, $6.80, but if we could strike those.
Can you come to the table, please?
They're on page.
Director, please identify yourself for the public.
Hi, Peter McDevitt, City Council Budget Director. That's a good catch, Councilwoman Warwick. I did speak to the Law Department, and they have actually tried to go ahead and, they've already canceled the subscription.
Okay.
They weren't able to take the charge off, but they are working on that, so.
Great, okay, thanks.
What do we do with this?
We can delete that. It's, they've already taken care of it, but for the purposes of our transparency, we can delete those two line items. Although, she made a motion, was there a second? I don't believe there was.
Oh, did you make a motion to delete?
She just asked, she didn't make a motion.
Okay. You want to make a motion to delete?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those, the two Post Gazette line items will be deleted from our P cards. We now need a motion to waive the rules for, of council so that the Bureau of Fire purchases can be approved under our P cards.
How much is it?
It's $8,000. They have a, a purchase agreement at, I believe it's Home Depot. However, Citibank hasn't processed all the invoices, and so they reached their credit maximum. So in order to purchase the necessary equipment, they had to utilize P cards, which purchasing was okay with, because they're trying to work out Citibank approving all the past invoices so they get below their, their credit amount, their cap.
You can shake your head all you want, I see Tim Gross is going to ask questions.
Councilwoman Gross?
Uh, Director, why might that happen? Is this something that happens for a reason? Why would Citibank have not processed those transactions?
It, it might be just a cash flow issue that-
Citibank ran out of money?
No, the city hasn't, I don't think the city has processed all of the invoices on our side to pay Citibank. It's, I mean, sometimes it just takes a while to get the Controller's Office to pay an invoice. We're at the beginning of the year trying to catch up on a lot of those.
Okay, so if it was my Citibank card and I made five purchases at Home Depot, Citibank might not pay Home Depot because I haven't paid Citibank. So you think city, that the city hasn't been paying its credit card?
I, I mean, it's not that we haven't been paying.
We're hypothesizing.
I didn't bring my computer up with me, but I do have the email from the Procurement Bureau who did explain, it's just working to, to get those past invoices processed, which it does take time to, to go through all of the, the steps with the Controller's Office, which is for a reason, to make sure that we're spending city dollars appropriately, so.
Director, do you think that the city has a cash flow problem?
No, no.
Good, that's all I need to know.
We're just at the beginning of the year.
They will be paid.
Yeah.
The paperwork is slow because it's supposed to be slow.
Yes, and again, we're at the beginning of the year. The city Controller, or the Controller's Office just reopened up paying invoices just a couple of weeks ago, so it is catching up a little bit.
Okay, I think I'm comfortable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So can we have a motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The rules have been waived, so now we can entertain the motion to approve the P cards. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved, thank you all. That takes us to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, chaired by Councilman Coghill. Our first new paper is Bill 1168.
Bill 1168, resolution amending Resolution Number 203, effective May 14, 2022, entitled Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to provide funding for a trail condition study to accept the grant and authorize necessary expenditures.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would sort of, I, uh, when we're applying for these grants, in my experience with DOMI, there have been situations where we have applied for grants and, not necessarily this, this situation, right? But where we have applied for grants and then down the road sort of been told, we have to do this work because we applied for this grant. And then really ultimately, the grant that we applied for was for something we didn't need, and so we found ourselves doing work that we didn't really need to do because we applied for a grant and we didn't want to leave the grant on the table. So with that in mind, and I did, I, I think I looked at all the documentation, but maybe I didn't, and I apologize if there's something I missed. But I, I guess I would like to, before we approve this, I would like to understand just what, what is this grant? And what is this trail condition study, and why do we need it?
Jeff, you want to come forward? Provide your name and position for the record.
Good morning, I'm Abe Jeff Scalick, I'm the Deputy Director for the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. Uh, this grant, we did receive the grants for $73,000, and it's to hire a consultant to accept, accept, to, excuse me, to have an asset management of the existing trail. So this is for the whole entire trail in the City of Pittsburgh. Um, so hopefully from this grant, projects will come out, out of it so we can apply for future grants to be able to fix our trails, to be able to be working conditions.
And, and can you define trails?
Sure, so it's all the, like, mostly the riverfront trails are in the City of Pittsburgh, like in the Strip District and through downtown, like the Point. So like, Squirrel Hill, those trails.
So are these, like, trails in the parks, or are these bike paths, or?
There's trails, like trails in parks. So these are not for bike paths. This is not for bike lanes or anything like that.
Okay, I guess I sort of thought that was under DPW. So like the trails that go, go through Shenley Park, or?
Um, yes, it'll be through the trails in Shenley Park and also the riverfront trails.
Okay, and, and so then what is the, so then what, what will this study? So just to, to see how, if all the trails need maintenance, is that what?
Correct. So hopefully we'll be able to get, like, hire a consultant in March. We're going to put out a proposal, hire consultants, and they'll be able to give us an assessment of the current conditions of the trail. So if there's a certain trail that has a landslide or needs fixed, we'll be able to have a stronger application for a future grant.
Okay.
So we need this background for, like, more information from the existing trail to apply for a grant, like a bigger grant.
Okay, great, and it would be nice, so again, like I said, I think I read through the emails. Maybe there's something I missed, you know, in the, the paperwork that comes with, you know, these resolutions. But if, if we could include, if, if DOMI could kind of include that information, that would be super helpful, I think, for us to just be able to say, what is this? Why do we need it, et cetera? Okay, I think that's all for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't have the text file printed out, but I have it pulled up on my tiny screen. And so, this is, um, 2023, 1168. Did you apply first before for this?
No, what we came to counsel before is a resolution to actually apply for the grant.
Okay.
So we received the grant, and this is to accept the grant.
So in 2022, you, we had the opportunity to ask questions about what you're applying the grant for. Because something similar happened in my district where I was like, you're applying for a grant for, it was a streets project, not a trails project, but for a major intersection, and I was like, somehow that was not, like, it didn't feel like it had come to the table before it was applied. So if someone could like refresh my memory of kind of like, how do we have this set up budgetarily for authorizations to apply for grants? I think this could really help us in keeping track of like what the administration is applying for. Certainly, it's happened with playgrounds in my district, it's happened with street projects in my districts. Similarly, it's kind of like, somehow no one knew that there was a grant applied for, and now there's a project. So is there a, a dollar threshold, or?
Uh, this grant was for $73,000.
Yeah, so, and so you did come to the table to ask for permission to apply for it. But it doesn't seem like that always happens. So this is probably a line of discussion, not for the Assistant Director of DOMI, but I can take it offline to our Budget Office after this meeting. Because similarly, I didn't really think about it on this item today, but it's been a discussion in my office of like, gosh, where are these projects coming from? And how are we, it didn't seem like we were looped in, how we might have been looped in. So I see that this is, you said trails all over the city, but I'm going to pursue that one. So back to, back to this specific bill, you mentioned the major parks, like Shenley Park and riverfronts. Um, I have Highland Park, which has a lot of kind of volunteers, trail groups that have built trails and actually maintain the trails. And I think, you know, it's all in the cooperative agreements with the parks, since there are, you know, in the rad parks especially, cooperative agreements on these things. So, um, what about greenways?
Well, this, this particular grant is just to hire a consultant just for the trails for, right now.
I know, but there are trails in greenways.
Right, um, we'll have to look, we could look into that.
Yeah, so I can, it'd be, it'd be, I think, interesting for you to report back to us of what trails are getting evaluated, because I bet you there's just trail, there's like more trails than we think. You know, and so, and that's fine. Like, we can just do the extent of what the grant will cover. But I think there's probably, um, that will leave some unevaluated. Um, and then I will take this conversational line, Director McDevitt, if you can remember to follow up with me so we can figure out kind of how does council get looped into these, not just DOMI projects, but projects where there's grants being applied for. I have, I, on the record saying, I think we should be applying for more grants. Like, I don't want to also leave any money on the table. I want us to, to not only do this, but pursue more. But it does, it can't be willy-nilly. It does have to be coordinated with community priorities and other capital projects, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that's part of the job of this table, is to make sure that like the, I hate to use the trendy word, but the silo departments aren't just kind of all running in different directions. So that's why we have these conversations here, so I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President.
So I just, every time this comes up about trails, every time something comes up about trails, I ask about this. The trails that we had under Tom Murphy, where they were all marked all throughout the entire city, they had them, they didn't connect all the way. But to me, it seems like when we're fighting about bike lanes and pedestrian trails and, and all those sorts of things, there's a trail system in place, I don't understand why we're not opening up. And so I wondered if they could look into, into those trails as well. Because some of them are in parks, but some of them are just off the, off the side of the road. And all they needed was maintained because they were, they, they, and connected better. Because I think part of the problem was they didn't all connect. And so I think if, if the issue is connecting them, and it's not as difficult as it is creating new bike lanes and new walking trails, why are we not looking at what we have existing and trying to expand on that? That's all. I mean, I still have the signs, I can take photos and show you where the signs are. I can find them, so you know it's not that hard, okay?
Councilwoman Strasberg?
Thank you, and I would echo everything that's already been said by my colleagues. And, um, yeah, I also would like to learn more about which trails there are. The trails that are sort of the wider dirt trails in our parks, there are the single-track trails in our parks, there are the paved trails on the riverfronts. And I did want to clarify though, you said these are not bike trails, but like, the ones on the riverfronts are walking and bike, right? So we are including those in the thinking, okay?
We are, what I meant was like bike lanes, like on the road.
Not specific bike lanes on the road, but bike trails or walking trails or multi-use trails on the riverfronts. That's great, but I am interested as well, because I know the single tracks, as Councilwoman Gross mentioned, are all, you know, oftentimes maintained privately by Trail Pittsburgh or, or whatnot. And, um, uh, what else was I thinking here? The, I'm also in agreement that we want to be applying for grants aggressively and to ensure that the grants fit into what we are planning to do anyway, or that they're just, they're not creating extra work that we weren't otherwise going to be working to accomplish. So I assume that this fits into an existing plan, either the 50-year plan or a 10-year plan that we have.
Right, our plan at Department is, we're going to manage this and run this, this program.
Okay.
They'll be able to get, like, we're looking for five or 10 years, you know, in advance.
Great, great. And by, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but in conversations I've had with Director Lucas, there's been a conversation around, you know, squeezing every amount out of our grants to help cover operating, operating costs, right? So to help pay the salaries of the staff that are going to, is that, is that an option here?
Well, this one, we're going to hire a consultant from, we have a person internally that's going to manage just this portion.
Okay.
After that, when we apply for more grants, we have input in that little, that percentage in the actual.
Great.
Oh, sorry, it was a little bit smaller, but, so yeah, in the future, we're putting in like, um, you know, more of a percentage to be able to hire somebody.
Excellent. I know that we want to, we, again, we want to find every possible funding source for, to pay for our staff and DOMI staff in particular, to really utilize that wisely. Uh, what was the other thing I wanted to ask about? I think that covers it. Yes, but more, more connectivity of all of our trails, which are so, so amazing and, you know, hidden and tucked away and rich in the city. And now labeled in, in, in some ways, in part because of the work of Matt Jacobs. So thanks, Matt, for all of his work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Bill 1169.
Bill 1169, resolution providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority for costs associated with the West Ohio Street Bridge Project, where PWSA would be responsible for paying 100% of the actual expenses involved in certain work described herein and itemized in Exhibit B at an amount not to exceed $285,777.25 in increase of $54,377.25 from the previously executed agreement, as authorized by Resolution Number 636 of 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Bill 1170.
Bill 1170, resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into a professional services agreement with Traffic Planning and Design, Inc. for work on Frankstown Avenue Signal Design Project at a cost not to exceed $232,701.68.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, affirmative recommendation? Bill 1171.
Bill 1171, resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for costs associated with the preliminary engineering phase of the 28th Street Bridge Project, providing for the payment of the cost thereof not to exceed $31,263.
Motion to amend, I had an amendment on this, it was a small increase.
Motion to approve first.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Coghill?
No discussion.
Motion to.
Oh, okay. So I, there is a small amendment that was sent out to members. It's an increase of, uh, I believe roughly $2,500. So motion to amend.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Assistant Director, if you wouldn't mind, yeah, answering a few questions while, since I have you here. Um, the top, the most important question about this bridge is that the work on it uh, will be coordinated with the Heron Avenue Bridge work so that Polishell is not stranded without access to the strip in downtown.
Correct. Yeah, this project is going a lot quicker than that one is. So we make sure that when it's in construction, we won't have two bridges that are out at the same time.
Thank you. I just want to, I'm going to keep repeating that every time this project comes up because it really is like the top concern from the community. And we were, we were just talking about it last night um, in the community meeting. And I have written confirmation that says the exact same thing. I'm just going to keep saying that because it's really, it's, um, you know, the two points of access into the neighborhood and it's really a big concern that they're not, um, done same time. So do you have a new timeline? You said it's going more quickly.
It is, I think. Let me, let me get back to you on the actual construction date when it's going to be bid up. Let me, I'll get back to you.
Okay.
I don't want to say something that's not.
Sure, sure. Okay. But this one is in motion.
It is. Yeah, it's going, it's going pretty well.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's the way I go to the strip too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 1180.
Bill 1180, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, Effective December 27, 2021, As Amended Entitled, Resolution Adopting And Approving A 2022 Capital Budget And A 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program And A 2022 Through 2027 Capital Improvement Program By Reducing LED Streetlight Upgrades By $1 Million.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion. Discussion?
This is a, just want to let everyone know, this is a corresponding bill uh, that corresponds with the changes that we made in the ARPA funding. Um, so this is, um, just a bill that goes alongside that. I'm not actually, it's not alongside it, but it needs to happen in order to, um, make those changes effective. And the Budget Director's here, if anyone have any questions on that.
Any other members? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Land Use And Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson. Our first new paper is Bill 1178.
Bill 1178, Ordinance Amending The Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article Five, Section 925.06, Setbacks To Update The Standards For Certain HVAC Equipment In Setbacks.
Uh, motion to approve, discussion?
Thank you.
Discussion?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm going to refer to the sponsor. The fur to the sponsor.
Thank you. Um, this, uh, this bill needs to be held for a, for the Planning Commission hearing. So I will make a motion to hold for Planning Commission, but I, I can reserve that until we have answers from other, other council members. And I'm happy to describe what's, what's included in this bill. Um, zoning administrator Layman did have a, a conflict. He was here earlier, but we, we didn't quite get to this in time for him to be able to explain it. But I'm happy to go over that if there, if there are any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, my question is, and I just, I didn't catch this before today's meeting, is kind of, since it's a zoning amendment, what is the amount of work on the Planning Commission? Uh, the Planning Department and the Planning Commission? Because we, there are very many of us council members who are trying to do work that would involve zoning amendments in, uh, with the Planning Department. And we've been told to kind of cool our jets and, uh, all, all the other metaphors for slowing down and uh, because of the workload on planning. And so I just don't understand, we've done some amendments for, um, you know, administrators' exceptions before in the past that actually lightens the work on planning? And so is this one of those instances and kind of what is the, the process of it? Thank you.
I'll be happy to walk very quickly through the history here. Last year, there was a heat wave that we had one week and it seemed like that was the week that everyone's HVAC units failed. They were trying to get, there were like, at least three in my district, they were trying to get replacement, um, air conditioners. And came to me because they, even though they were, they were trying to replace their air conditioning units in kind in the exact same location as before, there was the need for an administrator's exception because they didn't fit within certain, you know, restrictions around, even though they were within the setback, they needed a letter from a neighbor and they needed to go through all this process and it just added to the process. Um, and then I think go to zoning, the zoning board for this. Um, yeah, I believe it was the zoning board for this. So this aims to maybe not change what is necessary, like it doesn't account for whether it is a replacement in the exact same location, but it does say that if, um, it takes it out of the administrator's exception and puts HVAC replacement or HVAC, HVAC, you know, with certain guidelines around it for rear and side and front setback requirements into a by right approval. And it just, so it does reduce the load. Um, I think that I'll just say that from, from the experience of working with, um, our zoning administrator Cory Layman, because it was such a quick and easy amendment to make and to, for him to write, for us to review and to take it here, um, it was very little workload on him. It was, I can't speak to what the workload on the Planning Commission to approve this will be. Um, but this seemed to be a pretty quick and easy one as compared to some of the changes that were, that we're talking about, if I'm picking up on what you're thinking of in terms of.
Do they have to do mailings to everybody in the city? Is there, you know, multiple public hearings? There are different levels of zoning amendments that council initiates and refers to Planning Commission that either require more or less process.
What I can do, um, is find out exactly what they will need to, what steps they will need to take prior to the Planning Commission. Because the, I don't know the answer to that question. From my perspective, it's Planning Commission and then approval and then back to council and, but there might be more to the story. So I'd be happy to find out.
Mm-hmm. I think Councilwoman Strausberger has the floor, but I'll have it back in if.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm finished. Thanks.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, so we, it's been a number of years. Um, and you used to like to put in your HVAC system, like your condenser outside. I think when I first got to council, you had to go to the full ZBA. You literally had to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. And so it really was a burden because so many houses were being renovated and air conditioning was being added. Um, over the, you know, if we kind of go back in a time machine like seven or eight years ago, um, that we took it, that kind of walked it back to an easier approval, which was the zoning, um, uh, what did I just, administrator's exception. Um, and so well, it seems like this is a, an attempt to walk it back even further. I've, I've had to do the signing off, right? And I certainly have lots of neighbors having to do these negotiations where it's like, when my neighbor was putting in a different system, she needed my signature, right? Because when you live in, um, in neighborhoods where you're, you know, four feet apart, some places are even three feet apart, you know, maybe you really shouldn't have that condenser under somebody's window. They can be very loud. Um, especially if they're not maintained, right? Um, so the, it's, it's, it's this, that's what's happening now. Um, but I wonder, I, I have a little nervousness about it going fully by right. Um, especially when you live, um, in neighborhoods where there's so much flipping and so much house renovation going on. Um, so you know, you're ending up with not just one condenser, but a lot of condensers all going in. Um, so I, I kind of wish to, I didn't read the text file. Um, I will read the text file. Uh, if everybody else is comfortable going ahead and sending it to the Planning Commission, we'll just deal with it that way. But, um, I am, I'm definitely going to read it. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Councilwoman Strausberger.
Um, motion, yeah, well, I'm happy to talk off. I, motion to, um, to, uh, refer to the Planning Commission for a hearing.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Um, that takes us to Bill 1179.
Bill 1179, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The Director Of The Department Of City Planning To Enter Into An Agreement Or Agreements For The Use Of Existing Agreements Between The City Of Pittsburgh, The Urban Redevelopment Authority And Industrial Arts Workshop, Inc. For The Creation Of Artwork On Land Which Is Owned By The URA And Which Is Intended To Be Transferred To The City Of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve, discussion?
Second.
Second discussion, Councilwoman.
Thanks, everyone. Sorry, just one more. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I did have some questions. I see, Sarah, are you able to come up? All right, thanks. Great. What? Yeah. Thank you. If you could state your name for the record.
Sarah, excuse me. Sarah Minert, Assistant Director, Public History, Art And Design, Department Of City Planning.
All right, thanks. So I did have some questions. So what's exactly happening in this bill?
So there is land that the URA has been working on, um, Somerset at Frick Park, which is intended to be gifted to the city. Um, as part of that, there's been an ongoing conversation between the city and the URA about sort of expectations and requirements of what needs to happen on that land before it comes over to the city's ownership.
What's being gifted though?
Artwork.
Oh, just the artwork?
Right.
That's on a piece of, piece of land?
Exactly.
Not the whole Somerset?
Yes, the land as well.
Okay. So, I just wanted, because I'm, I don't represent that area. So I'm not going to act like I know what's happening there. So where all the houses are built, that's currently URA property?
There's a large park area, green space in the middle of those houses and that's the specific area we're talking about.
Okay. So no houses in this section?
No, just the, the green space in between them. And my understanding is that they're following our percent for art ordinance, the old version, because this has been a, a project in the works for a while where 1% of the construction cost to turn that into that green space park was reserved for public art. So they've gone through a very similar process to select an artist and work with the community. And our role has been to just ensure that all of the same obligations and terms that we would engage with an artist for artwork coming onto city property match the agreement that the URA is making with the artist.
Having a little trouble following. So the, the, the 1% of art that was tied to a project previously? Because this is old, old work?
Correct.
What was the project?
Developing that green space park.
So it's not like, I got you. Developing that green space. What was it? I don't even know what's there. What's there?
I think it used to be slab.
It's, it's, it's the entire development. So, so there was a, it used to be just a slab heap. The URA redeveloped the entire slab heap to build all the homes, you know, all of that. They're now following through on the total development cost of Somerset. 1% of that had to be commissioned for artwork. They finally got to the place where they're ready to install the artwork. And then that little slither, it's long Shellbone Lane, I think that's Shellbone Lane, excuse me, will be transferred to the city. But the 1% is tied to the entire development.
Okay. Well, why does it have to be transferred to the city?
That's, that's beyond the scope of where, where I work.
Huh? Oh, I don't know. I don't even know what it looks like. I'm just curious on what the.
It's not designed yet.
Oh.
Hasn't been installed yet.
Okay.
So with regard to the public art, the city would be signing the agreement with the artist and the URA. There's no sort of financial commitment on the city's part, but because we are signing a contract, that's why it's coming through this legislation.
Councilwoman Warburton?
Yeah. So this is my district. Yeah. And so just to, to catch me up, because this is not something, yeah, is, um, so have we, is, has the art been chosen? Has the community already gone through this whole process and everyone knows what's happening?
Yes. So the URA was leading that process, but they closely involved our department in, um, putting the request for proposals together for artists and selection, um, in identifying the community to participate in talking about what artwork was desired and ultimately selecting the artist.
Great. And then just one question, because I know I did get a question about the funding for that park in general. Do we know where that funding came from?
I don't know that.
Okay. I'll have to look into that.
Okay.
Because I heard that it might have been parks tax money, which doesn't sound right to me for. No, I know, I know. But I'm talking about where, yeah, at any rate, sorry.
I'd be happy to, um, get in touch with our URA contacts who have been with this project from the beginning.
Yeah, that'd be helpful because I'd love like a quick catch up on just what, yeah, thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Recreation, Youth And Senior Services Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. We have one bill, Bill 1181.
Bill 1181, Resolution Authorizing Renaming Shortiers Field To Shortiers Wing Gap Field.
Motion, uh, motion to hold for a public hearing, cable cast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for a cable cast public hearing.
Thank you.
Takes us to our last committee of the day, Inter-Governmental And Education Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Our first new paper is Bill 1172.
Bill 1172, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For 5026 Street.
Uh, motion to hold, and I'll explain if anyone wants, motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion.
Councilwoman Gross?
This is, this is 1173. I was sidebar-ing, so it's 1173?
1173.
This is 1172.
Oh, no, no, no. Okay. Nope. Totally fine. Motion to approve. I withdraw my motion. Motion to approve.
Draw my second, second to this one.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation on Bill 1172. Now Bill 1173.
Thank you.
Bill 1173, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For Proposed Land Development Located At 4554 Through 4564 Penn Avenue At Parcels Number 49M121, 49M122, 49M123, 49M124, 49M125, 49M126.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So these, um, council members have heard me say this before. This project doesn't even have zoning approvals yet. So we, we don't even know if you can build what is being proposed here. So, um, thank you to my staff for always double checking this. This is why I always check with council members when projects are moving forward in their districts to see if it's at the point where we should be even approving a sewer module. And I will wa, I haven't had this conversation with the new administration yet, but I will revisit this with the Law Department and see why this sequencing is, is out of order. I've, I've spoken to our solicitor about it in the past. So motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held for weeks. Bill 1174.
Bill 1174, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For 1100 Shady Avenue, Plan Of Lots, 1100 Shady Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to our last bill, Bill 1175.
Bill 1175, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan For 3339 Ward Street.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda. We do have meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meeting on Tuesday, February 14th and Wednesday, February 15th at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Anything from members? Madam President?
I just first want to wish Councilwoman Kraus well. He's been watching. He had his surgery yesterday. He'll be out for a few weeks, but, um, want to wish him well. And even though he had surgery, this morning he was calling about things for work. So, you know, he's still working down to the last minute. And through pain. So I want to thank him for his, for his diligence and wish him well. And the other thing I want to say is last night I attended a meeting in my district where a lot of the athletic associations came together to meet with, um, Chris Hornstein and, um, and Marcel Newman and other people from, that they put together. And I really want to thank them for continuing those meetings and for having those meetings to help people through the permitting process. But one of the things came up, they wanted to thank us for the permitting process, uh, but they did make one suggestion. And so I told them we'd make that one amendment. And, um, it's my, it's minor. But, uh, I just want to thank them and I'm glad that they paid attention and I'm glad that what we did was helpful. So I, so I want to thank Councilman Wilson's office again, uh, for working through that. Um, I think they did a really good job with, with, uh, with trying to capture what everybody wanted. But, um, overall, they were happy. And I just want to thank them again for the event that they had. And it was so nice hearing all the positive things people had to say about Director Hornstein and Marcel. Um, you hear so many negative things working in the city sometimes and about our staff and about the people that do things. And I mean, sometimes we forget to thank them for the great work they do. So I want, I want to thank them because they're, the, them, and Catherine Vargas was there as well and people loved her too. And I just want to say, I think that some of, um, you know, what they do is, is some of the most important work in the city. And I just want to say, I think that some of, um, you know, what they do is, is some of the most important work in the city, and we forget that. But working with our, you know, our roads, our athletic associations, the ball fields, the facilities, they do, and, and all the rec programs, they're, they're doing a lot of different things with, and as far as city parks, they have a small budget. And so, you know, it, it's really, they're doing a lot of amazing things. But DPW, uh, really, um, they had a lot of accolades yesterday from across the City of Pittsburgh, from our constituents, so I think it was important to hear that, so. And they're going to continue to meet with us on, on some other things, too, that we meet with.
Yeah, just a quick reminder to everybody that at 1:00, Pittsburghers for Public Transit is going to be here. They want to talk with everyone about just the state of public transit in the city. So, if, if folks already have scheduled, that's great, and if, if you're able to talk with them, that'd be great.
Anything else? If not, need a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.